Ladies and gentlemen, the August 24th, 2020 meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board is now in session. The Chair recognizes Mr. James Harris for our invocation.
That's great. Most gracious having followed, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity that we can meet for August 24th, Rockingham County Planning Board Meeting. Lord just be with us tonight. We have three cases we have to review, help us to make decisions that will be beneficial to the requesting parties and also the citizens of Rockingham County. We ask these things in your precious name. Amen.
Next on our agenda is approval of the meeting minutes for the last meeting. And I understand we have some corrections. Emily, did you make the corrections? Okay. In that case, the Chair will consider a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept the minutes as amended.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept the corrected minutes. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. There being no opposition, the motion carries unanimously. The three cases we're going to hear tonight are what are called quasi-judicial hearings. That means it's like a court hearing. State law sets specific procedures and rules concerning how this board must make its decision. These rules are different from other types of land use decisions, like rezoning cases. The board's discretion is limited. The board must base its decision upon competent, relevant, and substantial evidence in the record. A quasi-judicial hearing is not a popularity contest. It is a decision constrained by the standards and the ordinance and based on the facts presented. If you will be speaking as a witness, please focus on the facts and standards, not personal preference or opinion. Participation is limited. This meeting is open to the public. Everyone is welcome to watch. Parties withstanding have rights to participate fully. Parties may present evidence, call witnesses, and make legal arguments. Parties are limited to the applicant, the local government, and individuals who can show they will suffer special damages. Other individuals may serve as witnesses when called by the board. General witness testimony is limited to facts, not opinions. For certain topics, this board needs to hear opinion testimony from expert witnesses. These topics include projections about impacts on property values and projection about impacts of increased traffic. Individuals providing expert opinion must be qualified as experts and provide the factual evidence upon which they base their opinion. Any and all persons who would like to speak at this hearing must be sworn in by the presiding board member. That'd be me. Additionally, each speaker... Hold on here, folks. When recognized, each speaker must approach the podium and state their name and address before speaking. Unless otherwise specified, all testimony, evidence, and comment should be directed to the chairman. Each case will be presented to the board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given the opportunity to brief the board regarding their application. Following the applicant's presentation, those who have signed up to do so will be granted the opportunity to speak against or in support of the proposal. If needed, the board chairperson reserves the right to set time limits for each speaker. After hearing from the public, the applicant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal. This will be followed by board discussion, motions, and voting procedures. Unless there are any objections from the board members, I move that we open the hearings.
I make that motion.
Okay, a motion has been made.
Second.
And seconded to open the quasi-judicial hearings. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There being no opposition, the motion carries, and the hearings are now open. Staff will introduce our first case, 2020-16.
Case 2016 is a request for a special use permit to operate a rural guest establishment. The address of the property is 651 Low Road in New Bethel Township, and the applicant is Wendy Cheeks. Your staff report has details about surrounding properties and its properties' location within the rural transition land class. Its purpose is to accommodate and encourage new industrial and commercial uses in areas where local government supports substantial investments in water, sewer, and transportation. Characteristics of this land class are lands outside of developed or urban transition areas where substantial capital investments are strongly encouraged. It does not, however, mean any request will meet the intensity of this land use class's capabilities. There may be things that are less intense than this, which is the case in this case. The property is located here at Low Road, and aerial view shows you that the access to the property is going to be off Low Road, not off of this interior drive, Snoopy Drive. The property has an access off of the end of Snoopy Drive, which takes it through a little bit of a neighborhood, and also has access off of Low, and that is the entrance that the applicant intends to use for this use, for this establishment. I don't know if you've seen requests for this type of use before. It's important to have reviewed the standards for a rural guest establishment. And I'll read that now. The intent of the rural guest establishment is to provide opportunities for tourist facilities in the rural sections of the county, so long as the traditional character of neighborhood is maintained. There are several standards listed in the special use permit description. Staff believes all those standards have been met and demonstrated by the site plan. In this case, staff has made an interpretation that the guest facilities will be what the applicant is going to be putting on the property as vintage camper facilities. So they're vintage campers. They're located permanently on the property. They're not transported in and out. And this is, the applicant can explain, a trend in glamping, as it were, these days. So my interpretation is that the camper as a dwelling satisfies what is intended for a cabin to do in a rural guest establishment.
Do the campers have water and sewer?
The site will be retrofitted for water and sewer for the number of campers that will be, that it will be located there. The building code, Chief Buildings Inspector has reviewed this. The Environmental Health Inspector has reviewed it to ensure that while it's an unusual use, that it will meet requirements for wastewater and water for the number of inhabitants that may be staying there. The other thing that's unique about this is the applicant intends to operate the stay, the short stays, as an Airbnb. She's operating an Airbnb in a home right now on the property and intends to rent the campers in the same method, which will, it means that it will be subject to the standards and requirements of the Airbnb business model.
And that business model is congruous with the standards of the county?
The business model is more about protecting the property owner from rental, from character of the people renting the property. And the applicant would be able to describe that better than I.
Okay.
Is one thing that the policy does. It also, those policies are basically in place so as to make sure that Airbnbs operate as good neighbors and can refuse a rental if they feel that it's not appropriate.
Do any of the members have questions for staff? Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Would you please come forward? For the record, please state your name and address.
It's Wendy Cheek at 651 Low Road, Madison.
Okay. And do we have a, Carrie, do we have a Bible up there?
It's right there.
Give me that.
Please place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Okay. What would you like the Planning Board to know about your application?
Well...
And I'm sorry, because of the number of people that have signed up to speak tonight, I'm going to have to limit your time to about five minutes.
Okay.
And I'll be lenient with that time, but if it looks like you're going to go on forever, I'm going to have to cut you off.
Okay. So I want to start a little vintage camper Airbnb on my property. I own almost 29 acres, and it's very important that it is going to be put out there as a quiet farm stay. And that is what my Airbnb now is, that I have in my home, is advertised as a quiet farm stay. So it's very important for me to keep it at its original and that it's not going to disturb neighbors, community, and it's not going to be like a high-traffic, people aren't going to be bringing in any kind of campers or anything. And I don't know if you guys are familiar with the vintage camper stuff that's happening, but it's gotten really pretty big in other areas of the state. Asheville has a huge Junebug Resort that, you know, is renting vintage campers, and people are doing them with weddings and stuff like that. But what I want to do is, I want it to be something quaint and small. And, you know, I'm excited about offering, you know, being able to bring something to the county that is different and unusual, that's going to bring people from all over and, you know, bring not only some income to myself, but revenue to the county, because each Airbnb stay that I have, the county makes a 3% off of that. And I have one guest that's renting with me right now that is here, you know, to give her side of it. She came from Atlanta and is staying. But I know my neighbors have valid concerns, and I understand that, and I want to address each and every one of those, because if I at all thought that I was going to do anything to bring a disruption in the neighborhood or to my life or to my property, because I live very privately, back way off the road, and I would not do it. And I would not want to do anything that changes the quiet farm that I have. But this is the opportunity to encompass something that I love, which is camping and adventure and bringing something where people can come and stay. If they go on the river, they can come for a night stay in a vintage camper, or they can, you know, if they go to the drive-in, you know, whatever the reason may be, that they have something different to come back to, to keep them in our county to stay and have a different experience, to bring something very fun and to bring a different experience to people. I love to cater to folks. I've been doing it my whole life, so this is just a different way to do it. But, you know, I want my neighbors to understand that there will be very specific boundaries set for this and that, you know, the invasion on people's property will not be happening. I won't allow it to happen. I've made it clear to everyone that has come and stayed with me so far what the boundaries are. Like, and it's not going to be anything that's visible from the street. Nobody will ever even know it's packed there except for people that come to rent, not even my neighbors. I might have one neighbor that, from a distance, may be able to see a little bit, but not anything like a big visual, just a through-the-woods kind of visual. And the thing with Airbnb is that I get to choose who stays. So it's not like renting at a hotel where anybody can call up and say. They send a request to me, and I, they have to put so many requirements into Airbnb, and if they don't meet those requirements, they do not stay. If they, if their license doesn't come back checked clear, you know, if they're a criminal, that will be flagged to me. Like, I will know those kind of things through Airbnb. And that's the reason I chose to use that particular way to rent or to have a vacation or a getaway for people, because it's safe for me, it's safe for the neighborhood, but yet it brings in income to the county. And, you know, I already have one business back there on my property that I have people coming in and out all day, and nobody ever notices that, you know? I mean, I have sometimes six cars coming back. I have a massage therapy and wellness business on my property, and, you know, people come from the city. They love coming to the country. The country's a big draw for folks, especially now, people looking to get, you know, kind of get away. I'm trying to, and, you know, and it's very important, I mentioned this, that I keep the traditional character of our area. I'm not looking to change that or to make it a big commercial business or anything like that. It's going to be a quaint, small business.
Can you give us an idea of about how many units you're going to have?
So right now, I'm restoring three. I have three vintage campers, a 1967, a 1973, and a 1972. One of them is almost totally done. The other two are getting worked on. But I'd like to have the option to do maybe five, but that's no guarantee, but at least three to maybe five.
And how many are actually being rented out now?
I am not renting any right now. I'm renting, I'm renting, I have one on my property, but it's not being rented. I have the whole upstairs of my home are rent as Airbnb. Like, I've had people come for a week or for a long weekend from different, from different states and stuff, but, and I don't know if any neighbors, unless I've told them, I don't know that they even know that, but, and, you know, and I just, I don't think there will be an invasion, I don't feel like they would ever be. It'd be invasion on my privacy. It's an invasion on my privacy, but I, I'm, I've been living there for 16 years by myself, so, you know, I'm enjoying meetings and folks and stuff, but I don't see how it can be an invasion on anyone's privacy in, in the neighborhood. But I'm willing to, whatever questions anybody has, to try to address them to the best of my ability. And, you know, Robin Yant with the tourism has been, as she's been out and seen my place and can really, if you needed to know what the Airbnb looked like and how all that appears now, you know, she, she would be able to give you information on that. And I did send Carrie some pictures and stuff that I'm...
Do any of the members have any questions for Ms. Cheek?
I do. Ms. Cheek, you said that there would be three to five campers there. Can you give just a very brief description about what one of these campers, like what the size of it is?
So...
Do you want me to put up the picture?
Yeah, you can. I've got one that is, it's not been repainted on the outside, but it's, it's about 16-foot. And then I've got one that's about 12 feet long. And then I do have an airstream that's maybe about, it's almost 20 feet, I think.
And Carrie, you've got photographs?
Wendy gave me photographs, so that if she wanted to present them as evidence, I'd be able to do that for her.
Yeah, and it's not a finished, it's not a finished one, but each one of them, I want to have like a little porch. They will be stationary, they'll be plumbed in to, to water and sewer, electric. And, you know, I can assure you, if you have ever seen my property, it will be aesthetically pleasing, and it will be very beautiful, but nobody's ever going to see it except for the people that...
If you have a photo, I would like to see it.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, and it's just, it's the one that's most done right now, and...
And while she's pulling that up, what is the maximum capacity of people that, if you, say you were to do the entire five...
So it's generally about two people.
Okay, so there would, you don't anticipate there being more than two people per camper?
No, there's not going to be able to be two, twenty-two people.
And the maximum, what is the average, what are you anticipating, the average number of nights that, say, the normal or average stay would be per guest?
I would say two.
Two nights?
Mm-hmm. On the camper side. Like, I've had a couple weeks, like four, four nights in a week stay in my home, and then my guest that's there from Atlanta is staying longer, she's my longest stay that I've had, that in the camper. I look, and me and Robyn, I've talked about this a lot, I look for it to be like a long weekend, a couple-night getaway, where people may come to the river, or they're doing the wineries, or they're doing something, and, and they just want something different to go back to and stay.
This isn't going to open unless I put it into our slideshow.
And then I sent her some pictures of just my property in general.
I think that I'm not, that I don't have the software in this computer to put them out, but what I can do, what I've disappointed you.
And, you know, I just, I do want to say that I do understand neighbors' concerns, like I'm very aware of that and understand it, and I just want to assure them that, you know, their privacy and their boundaries will not be crossed.
We're going to, we're going to get, we're going to do this. Okay.
If it takes too long, that's okay. I can figure it out.
You got it. Sort of a smaller slideshow.
Yeah, that's just a view coming down, down my driveway from not, that's still a good ways from the road, and that's still a good way zoned up the hill for where the campers would be. Now, this, this is one that currently is the most finished, but it's, it's a re, a paint job on outside, and it will have a porch added on it.
This is one that's under renovation.
Yeah, this is one in my home now. It's a 1973 minus frisbee. And there's like a picture from the inside of it.
Would you like to show any of the other pictures?
I mean, basically, I just sent pictures of, pictures of my property, and I did bring a couple magazines that features the vintage campers.
Well, I think we get the, I think we get the drift here, what you're trying to do. Are there any other questions for Ms. Cheek, from the board members?
Yes, I have one.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Cheek, do you live on site at this property?
I do live on site.
You do?
Yeah.
Do you provide any meals or anything like that for the people that speak?
No, it's not part of the Airbnb thing to provide meals. I mean, it's not part of Airbnb, but I have fixed a meal for Tasha and myself, like when she's there, like, you know, I'm not opposed to somebody eating something with me, but I don't, I don't, that was not part of the deal. It's a free-to-make meal schedule.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. For the record, please state your name and address.
My name is Victoria Lawton, and my address is 691 Low Road, Madison. I live directly in front...
And if you'd place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you. And what is it that you would like the Planning Board to know?
Well, I'm not for this. I'm against it, and I'm, my reasons are many. I'm a retired teacher and educator in Rockingham County Schools, and my husband and I have lived there since 1987. In fact, we were the first people who bought the property from the owners who owned all the acreage, and we were the only occupants of that road for at least nine months when it was zoned rural agricultural. The reason we chose that area was because at the time, we were showing and breeding Norwegian Elkhorn dogs, and we needed the privacy, the space, and, you know, just for us to be able to accomplish our goals. And that space and that privacy and safety allowed us to accomplish our goals of breeding some of the finest dogs of that breed. And for nine months, we lived there by ourselves with no other occupants, no other homes built. Ms. Wendy Cheek, who's requesting this zoning request change, and I, we've been friends a very long time. However, she initiated this idea neglecting to even consult her closest neighbor's opinions, who would be adversely affected, in my opinion. Ms. Cheek is trying to have said property rezoned to supplement her income after she retires. As it stands, she already has the commercial massage business, as she stated, and the Airbnb on the second floor of her home. According to Rockingham County Rules and Guidelines of Rural Guest Establishments, as Ms. Spencer had earlier mentioned, the opening paragraph states, "The intent is to provide opportunities for tourist facilities in the rural sections of the county, so long as the traditional character of the neighborhood is maintained." Now, I believe Ms. Cheek will maintain it on her property. However, they have to go past mine to get to hers, and that's where the problem is for us. The traditional character of this neighborhood will not remain intact, nor will it be maintained due to a zoning change. That will invite businesses to disturb the traditional character of the neighborhood. The rules and guidelines also clearly state that under letter F, other standards, number three, uses limited letter C, that, quote, "No manufactured housing, RVs, tents, or temporary shelters are allowed on the property." The planned vintage campers are certainly manufactured housing, and they are temporary shelters. They can be moved, and if approved, will be on the said property of 651 Low Road. Since I live at 691 Low Road, my home is situated at the primary entrance... Since I live at six ninety-one Low Road, my home is situated at the primary entrance to her property and we own a partial piece of the road. We know that our home and property will be adversely impacted by the zoning change, with the road to Ms. Cheek's property running on the west side of ours. Traffic on this gravel road already exists due to her two businesses in place. We have recently paid for repairs to the road in proximity of our home due to potholes and wear and tear on the gravel road from the traffic that exists. Something very important that is a health concern that worries my husband and me is if the traffic does increase, it that, it will compromise his already delicate issues, which include chronic respiratory ailment and recently diagnosed with interstitial lung scarring. The vehicles will create road dust by driving to and from the camp location multiple times per day and night. Besides the road usage issue, we also have great concerns about the invasion of privacy, having total strangers passing our home multiple times day and night. My husband and I are both retired and plan on living our golden years in safety, privacy, and tranquility. One of the most important reasons we stayed at this address after retirement is because we feel safe. We never have to worry about our animals, equipment, or property. And nobody tampers with anything and we are fearful we will have to start worrying now. The zoning change should, if it should occur, it makes our property ripe for burglary by having strangers casing out our home. Approving this zoning request will allow for complete strangers from unknown parts of the country to drive past my property, putting us at great risk for confrontation, burglary, or worse. And I know Airbnb does, you know, they do a thorough check, but it's, nothing's a hundred percent. Living in this section of the county as well, we see little or no law enforcement surveillance and luckily, we have no need for it at this time. However, it very well could change and negatively affect our safe environment. It is incredibly sad that at this time in our lives, we must think about installing a security system for our safety as we age. Besides the privacy issue and the safety, another concern is the importance to speak of the installation of the well and septic tank. In the event that Ms. Cheek should sell her property with a septic tank and well infrastructure in place and a zoning change, it may be very easy for the next owner to create a multiple family dwelling such as a trailer park. And this would go against all that we who live on Low Road want and would go against the Rural Guest Establishment Guidelines the county created. In conclusion, the latest enterprise that Ms. Cheek is planning will upset our lifestyles to exist as we know them. And we are not able to stop it, but you are. We have lived peacefully and safely on Low Road for thirty-three and a half years and we now feel worried. I ask you, at what point is our retirement life plans less important than her retirement plans? Our retirement plans do not interfere with anyone's lifestyle, hers do. Thank you.
Hold on one second, ma'am, any questions, please, from Ms. Lawton? Thank you very much. Is Herb Budle here? If you would, for the record, please state your name and address.
I'm Herb Cottle, one fifty Austin Main, address is Stokely.
Okay, and if you would now place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Well, I'm here to speak on behalf of Wendy Cheek. Listening to the lady previously, I can understand her concerns. I don't claim to be an expert in this field, but I have, in many years, been in construction business. When I moved to North Carolina from California, I gave up my construction license because I figured I'd never need it again. So anyway, what Ms. Cheek is trying to do out there, to my opinion, is superb. The trailers that she's putting on there is well above the recommendations for state and county as far as that is concerned. They are superbly put together. Matter of fact is, I'm building one for her right now. And the area in which this is going is going to be considerably off of the main highway. I personally don't feel that it's going to cause any problem whatsoever with any of the neighbors. I do not feel that it is going to run the property down in any area whatsoever. If anything, it will increase the value maybe. But if this lady is so particular on what she has and her property, it, it's unbelievably that she can accomplish and do and maintain the property she has for the amount of work that she is doing. And to say that something's going to be eyesore, no, absolutely not. This whole system is really going to be a pleasure to look at and I certainly believe that anyone that wants to go in there and spend the night will enjoy it. I know we don't have a lot here in Rockingham County to offer people, but let's, let them see for themselves and let them come out and enjoy a little bit of country life and see what it's like here in Madison area. So anyway, I'm hoping sincerely that the board will take in consideration and let this lady continue and do what she is dearly enjoying doing herself in helping people. And I'm going to give you a little bit of incident here, so a little bit about this lady. Recently, we had quite a bit of rain and a little stream of water coming down through her property as well as the property above her. Flooded her road and also flooded the road up above her. The gentlemen or the people that owned that road up there come to her and says, "It's your fault that this water damaged my road, this little creek of water." So they wanted gravel. And she went out and bought them a load of gravel to put up there where the water damaged their road. Now, if she's going to affect someone's property, would she have gone out of her way, spent her money to repair somebody's property that the act of God created? That's the type of person you'd give a man. I sincerely hope that you will take this into consideration and let this lady do and maintain what she wants out there for the, her and for the county. And gentlemen, that's all I got to say.
Any questions for Mr. Cottle?
I have a question for Mr. Cottle. You stated that you're building or renovating one of these trailers?
I'm renovating one right now, yes, I am.
Okay, is it currently on site or?
It's at my place.
Okay.
It's at my house.
And how long have you been renovating these?
Taking my time, I've probably been working on it for about the last, oh, three, maybe four months. But see, I don't work a full eight-hour shift. I work an hour or so in the morning, an hour or so in the evening because it gets hot inside that trailer. But this unit has been completely gutted, everything taken out of it. All the electrical wires replaced, the plumbing is being replaced. And next step is to put down the floor, which is where we start putting the cabinets back in. And I would, it, you're welcome, come out and take a look at it. In fact, I'd love for you to come out and take a look inside, see what it's going to be like. And get an idea of what this lady is going to be putting up out there.
Thank you, Mr. Cottle. That's all for me.
Tasha. I'm going to let you pronounce your last name.
Tasha Judah, thank you for letting me pronounce it.
For the record, please state your name and address.
Tasha Judah, I currently live in Atlanta, but I'm staying with Wendy.
Oh, give us your Atlanta address.
Six hundred Garson Drive, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three two four.
Okay, and if you would now place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Okay. And what is it that you would like the planning board to know?
So I'd just like to come and share a bit of my experience. I am Wendy's current Airbnbier. I was fortunate enough to find her semi-recently. I've been on her property for roughly a month and it has been an amazing stay. I came from Atlanta because I wanted an escape from the city amidst all this Corona craziness and I was specifically seeking a small town similar to where I grew up, very quaint, private property, and that's exactly what Wendy has. And when she told me about what she would like to do, I think it's an amazing idea. Her property is impeccable, extremely private. And from my, I understand neighbors' concerns, but from my personal experience, I've been there for, again, almost a month. I'm outside every day, exploring, visiting the animals, going up and down the drive, but very respectfully. I haven't come into contact with one neighbor this entire time. And I just think that the attention to detail that Wendy has for everything, I've personally seen one of the campers, is they're adorable, they're very tasteful, and they're very small. I've seen the area where she wants to put them and I happen to actually have a lot of experience with campgrounds. My family owns one in up-to-date New Hampshire. And although it's on a much bigger scale than what Wendy would like to do, it has completely changed the economy in that small town, it's Lancaster, New Hampshire. I have noticed that when I go into the main street of Madison and enjoy, you know, the Mad Bean Coffee Shop and the vintage consignment shops and stuff, I'm the only non-local. I'm shocked because it's so, it's so adorable and so welcoming. I've only had good experiences here and I just, I think it's a tremendous idea and it would really help the local businesses because again, you know, I go into the coffee shop every few days to set up a little workstation and, you know, meet locals and they're always very curious. And I just, I'm in shock that there's not more people to enjoy this beautiful area.
Do any of the members have any questions for Ms. Judah? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Carrie Swinney. For the record, please state your name and address.
Carrie Swinney, I live at six forty-one Low Road, Madison, North Carolina. It's the frontal property.
Okay, if you would now place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And what would you like the planning board to know?
So I got a couple of things I want to talk about. I tried calling today to see if this will cause any kind of depreciation for our housing or for our house, and I couldn't find that out, but that, that's one of my main concerns. Being as it may be a commercial aspect. But the other thing was, I was trying to see what the layout was going to be like. I tried to get some information earlier today, but they said the power was out and they couldn't transfer the files. But to attest to Wendy, she is an outstanding neighbor and it, she keeps her property in pristine shape. I mean, she is doing everything she can, she, I mean, she outworks me sometimes, or most of the time. I mean, she's, she's really a, a great neighbor to have. And to attest to what the lady just said about she's come up and down the driveway multiple times, she's been there a month, I've never seen, I've never even seen her, never even noticed her, never even knew it. And I work from home now, so, so I'm always there and I didn't even notice. And the other thing is, but Vicky also made a good point too, and I thought about it too while I was sitting here, what would happen if Wendy was to decide to move for some crazy reason? The new tenant could possibly revamp that area since it's already been zoned or approved for this type of layout, that he could put in other types of trailers that are not as luxury, luxurious or nice. So that's, that's also a concern of ours. But as it stands now, she would take great care of it and it would not be a nice word to anyone. As you've seen in that picture, that picture right there, it's almost a quarter mile. I mean, it feels like, it's like a five-mile walk just to get back to that side from the front road on Low Road. So I mean, it, it's really, and it's probably a thousand feet where you pass through. So Vicky lives here, I live here, Snoopy, or that private drive goes in between our drive. And there's not a lot of traffic that would come through there, I wouldn't think, because most couples would be traveling in one car and most time they'll either be out doing whatever they're going to do, then come back. What I would like to know and to see happen is maybe take baby steps to this. Implement just maybe three of these structures and see how it goes. See how the neighbors react with it, let it go from there. If, if there's an issue, because am I right, is it two years that this holds? And then you have to reapply for this zoning or is this after it gets?
No, this is it.
This is it? I thought you had to reapply for it later.
Let's see if we can answer your question though. Is there a limitation on the number of units that, that can be on this property?
There is a limitation on the number of units, but not the number of years. And it's, it's. Sorry about that. It's not a rezoning, it's just a special use permit for a very particular use with conditions that you are, and you are able to actually add conditions to the request. But it would run with the property once approved.
For the lifetime of the property?
Yes, sir, and if somebody wanted to change the use, they would have to come back through the same process.
Okay, change the use of the structures that are being implemented on the property?
If changing it from a rural guest establishment without whatever conditions are imposed by the board tonight.
Okay.
Or requested by the board and agreed to by the applicant.
So the other major issue is it going to depreciate my home value? That's, if it doesn't, then we're okay with it, I mean, it's, that's what I, that's what my concerns.
The county's not in a position to answer that question. You would need to consult with a real estate appraiser or, or broker or somebody to have that conversation.
Okay.
And even, even if you thought that it was going to depreciate your property, its opinion and its unsubstantiated to this board because you don't have an expert to verify your claim.
Okay.
That's why we discussed the expert.
Yeah, I know.
Testimony at the beginning of the meeting.
Let's see.
We're not trying to diminish your concern, but.
Right, because it, I mean, it is a huge concern of mine, I mean, frankly.
We have to go on factual evidence.
Right.
I will add that this doesn't change the zoning, it's still residential agricultural.
Right.
Yeah, I was going to mention that too.
Allow the uses, so you could subdivide, for instance, up to five times without a rezoning right now.
Okay.
And put five different permanent homes back there as a permitted use with, by right in the RA zoning district.
Okay, so for me, we're, we're good with it. I mean, she is a very responsible neighbor, very considerate, very honest, very, I mean, yeah, I didn't get to hear about this for a couple of weeks until this happened, but, I mean, this is the land of the free. You buy a piece of property, you do what you want to do with it, make yourself money, but that's your retirement. Do what you want to do with it. I understand, as long as you don't try to impede other neighbors and it's really not a big help thing for other neighbors or, I mean, I can understand the fact of strangers going to be there and our property, because back, the whole back of my property, they would be driving down and you would see and everything, that it, it would cause that potential of people saying, yeah, let me just come over here or maybe somebody could just take some, but she has a very strict policy about who she's going to rent to, what she has told me. And like I said earlier, I didn't even know she had that one person there for a month. So the traffic thing, I don't think is going to be an issue either.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Swinney? Thank you, sir. And how about Julia Norman?
Just here in support.
You're just here to support, you don't wish to speak?
No.
Okay. That concludes the speakers who have. That concludes the speakers who have signed up to speak. I do have some comments that were emailed in.
Mr. Chair, if, if I could speak to that for, for a moment?
Sure.
As far as the written comments that were submitted, there are two, well, two issues that I see, one being that, of course, if any of these are anonymous, we don't, if we don't identify who the individuals are and hearsay, but the underlying issue is that for a quasi-judicial hearing, they're not under oath, and that board, the board cannot take evidence or consider evidence that is not any statements that isn't under oath, so that would be a hurdle for a quasi-judicial.
Thank you very much.
And two of them are here. Two of them are here.
Discussion of members?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I've known Ms. Cheek for over 25 years, and I've had the opportunity to visit her property, and I echo the gentleman's statements about how she keeps her property, an extremely honorable person. I just want the board to know that.
It occurs to me that if we grant this permit, since her ambition is to only have as many as five trailers, that perhaps one of our conditions should limit the capacity of this venture to five units. That would also satisfy the concerns about a septic system. A septic system for five units would limit anyone just moving in from having any more than five units.
I would agree with that, Mr. Chairman.
I would agree with that, Mr. Chairman.
If you, you'll, you'll want Ms. Cheek to come back to make sure that she accepts the condition.
Yes, she has an opportunity for rebuttal. Now, Ms. Cheek?
To rebuttal, once you finish, if you have any more discussion before that.
Sure. Could you come forward, please? First of all, you have an opportunity now to offer any rebuttal to anything that you've heard.
I could rebuttal something that was said by Ms. Lawton, but I don't want to really go there in front of a group that...
That's certainly your choice.
Okay. That is not a correct statement, but I, I just appreciate, you know, really the opportunity to, to do this, not only just for what I enjoy doing, but bringing something to the county and something to Madison, and I don't think I have anything else I really want to say. I appreciate everybody.
Okay. What's, what's your feelings on being limited to five trailers?
I'm perfectly fine with that. I don't, if I even got to that point, I don't even know that I would get to that point to five, but that would ever be my limit. Like, I don't care about having anything on a big scale.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, I would be very happy with that, if it got to that, you know, if that was something that I felt like I could go to that next step. I know I can do three, but I don't, you know, it does require, I'm a blue collar worker, so it does require a lot of money, so I don't, you know...
Yeah.
...to get it started.
Okay, thank you.
If I, if I can make a suggestion, just for the, for the record, there were F, standard F3 that the one property owner talked about, the no manufacturing, housing, RVs, tents or temporary shelters. When you think about the intent of the rural guest establishment and the activities that Wendy intends to do, my suggestion would be to go ahead and make the condition, make a condition of the permit, the fact that she can use up to five RV-style, I mean, I'm sorry, vintage-style campers.
Mm-hmm.
And just to specify that so that there's no contradiction.
Sure. That's what I had in mind.
Okay. All right, Paul.
Okay, what do you classify as vintage, too? Can you specify that?
Vintage usually implies 25 years.
25.
Like, if you go to a vintage car show, for example, the cars usually have to be at least 25 years old. Yes, ma'am.
Do the vintage campers or any camper, are they not under the manufactured housing or temporary shelter?
No, I think they're a separate category.
They are a separate, they're a separate category, yeah, they're sort of an in-between. And one of the reasons is they're not, they're not mobile, they're stationary.
Yeah.
In this particular case, the guest quarters are stationary camper guest cabins.
Any further discussion by members?
Just a statement, Mr. Chair, if I may. I just want to thank the folks who did offer comments, Ms. Lawton especially. I recognize the fact that safety is important these days and times. However, I do like Mr. Swinney's comments about it is her property, and if she has a right to, to earn a living and do what she sees fit with her property, I wholly support that, and from the comments from neighbors, it would seem that she is a well-respected neighbor in her area, and I would support that right as well. Thank you.
Is there a motion before the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. The Planning Board has reviewed the special use permit and adopts the following statements as required by Rockingham County UDO and North Carolina General Statute 153A, 341 and 153A, 342. After considering Rockingham County adopted comprehensive plans and UDO, the Planning Board approves this 2020-16. This action is consistent with the adopted Rockingham County land plan use. After reviewing the competent material, substantial evidence in the record, the board makes the following findings for the four conclusions necessary to approve a special use permit: A, that the use or development is located, designed and proposed to be operated so as to maintain or promote public health, safety and general welfare; B, that the use or development complies with all required regulations and standards of this ordinance and with all other applicable regulations; that the use or development is located, designed and proposed to be operated so as to maintain or enhance the value of contiguous property; or that the use or development is a public necessity; and that the use or development conforms with general plans for land use and development of Rockingham County as embodied by, in this chapter and in Rockingham County UDO. Additionally, we'd like to put a limit on five, no more than five...
Vintage.
Vintage RVs that will be permanently...
Camper's not, I would, I would suggest using the word camper and not RV, just for clarity.
Five vintage campers.
Thank you.
No more. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There being no opposition to the motion, the motion carries and the application is And now, our director will introduce us to case 2020-20.
If, if I may add to the comments that we made about, the comments that were emailed in.
Mm-hmm.
I understand, did you read through those comments to ensure that there was no credible evidence that would be evidence other than opinion?
I did. It's all opinion testimony.
Okay, and I just wanted to point that out because perhaps there was a misunderstanding on the part of the people who submitted those comments and are probably watching the stream now as to why and how we accept comments for cases such as this, and that applies to the next, the following two cases as well. It is important for you to have all read those comments, so is that, that is the case?
Oh, I can pass those around.
Well, the, all the, the board has read them all. I think they have. Has everyone read them?
Yes, I've read them.
Yes.
For all three cases, okay. Thank you. Now, I'm going to regroup. I lost my mouse. While I'm, while I'm trying to bring this up, I'll continue talking about it. This is a special use permit to allow for a rural family occupation. The, the use for the rural family occupation is, I, I will be honest, isn't entirely clear. We do have a, a site plan from the applicant, and he can talk to you about what he intends to do on the property. It's a 14-acre property, and he wishes to use a portion of it for, part of it is used for storage of vehicles, and I believe he does some work on them, and then he has a, a contracting, contracting business that he uses to store vehicles on the property for. Staff does conclude that you have, and we have received enough information to review this case. It became, it came to our attention as a, as a complaint and started as a, as a case, as an enforcement case. This is the property owner's sincere desire to bring it under compliance with the ordinance. The question is clarifying what the use is and whether it's appropriate for this zoning district. The big, or for a special use for a family occupation, the big threshold here is the outdoor storage of vehicles limited to 600 square feet before it becomes categorized as a junkyard. And if there's some other description of use in between, you, you, we will have the opportunity for the applicant to describe it. So, someone better than me needs to help me do this.
Oh.
No, it's, I'm not, I lost my pointer. Oh, there it is, there it is, sorry. All right. Property's located in the rural transition land class, which is intended, as is the other case, to accommodate new industrial and commercial uses outside of developed or urban transitional areas where substantial capital investments are strongly encouraged. In this case, the applicant is not asking for capital investment, it's just a description of that land class. The property is located here. The overall property is about 14 acres. I think this request is for just a couple of those. I'll get the site plan, will tell me better. This is a outline of the area requested for a special use permit, the pink border being the, the area of the property that he wishes to operate, and...
Is there a, go back, is that a cemetery I see in the middle?
Right here?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't...
Oh, that might, that might be less over. How long?
Let's, when, when the, when the applicant reach, comes to the podium, they can answer that question for you.
Okay, fine.
So, this is a site plan proposing the rural family occupation for the site.
Thank you, Carrie. Mr. Faircloth?
Yes, sir.
You're the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If you would, first, please state for the record your name and address.
My name is Richard Faircloth. I live at 281 Ellis Road Garden Lane in Madison.
Okay. Now, if you place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Why don't we hear from you first, and then we'll ask you some questions?
I guess I kind of started to work for myself a little over a year ago. I got laid off. Over the years, I've acquired vehicles, equipment, tools and such to be able to sustain income without having to have a boss. And that fell in line with having stuff at my house. I own a few rollbacks, trailers and such, and I offered towing for people. Also, I would buy occasional scrap cars, something that somebody didn't want on the property, and I would sit on it for a little while and take it to the crusher when I either sold a few parts off and it wasn't valued to me anymore, or just it wasn't worth sitting there for me. Also, I do bobcat work and a little bit of tree work. I have a small dump truck, like I said, I've got three or four trailers I use, and of course, a bobcat. And I've got several personal vehicles that I, I use for such things that, and the main, main thing, I guess you could say, would be vehicle storage. My backyard, I've got plenty of room in the back to be able to put vehicles out of sight of everybody except for maybe one, my neighbor right next to me, and I've helped them on many occasions, we've talked, and they, they're fine, they told me they're fine with what I'm doing. I've been doing stuff like this for the seven, eight years I've been on the property, not to the scale I am now, but to the scale where I need to get something taken care of and do this the right way and make it legal. I have people that don't like me, just like everybody, people that know that what I do at my property, and they decide, well, I know what I can do to hurt them. I can hit them where his wallet, and that's where code enforcement come in on their part. I do understand that I'm not supposed to do what I'm doing without proper, you know, zoning and stuff, that's the way I support my family. I'm hoping that one day that when I get too old to do this, or when I want to retire, I can let my youngins do this. A big part of that would be having a place to be able to do this at. With the income I make now, there's no way I could rent a place or even think about buying a separate lot in town or something, somebody's already set up, or what I do. It's real feasible for me to have the almost 15 acres I have, be able to use for personal uses such as working for myself and other things of that matter. It's very convenient, it cuts a lot of cost out of a bunch of other stuff, and right there, if I'm storing vehicles for somebody, say, if somebody gets in an accident, I can, I can be there, somebody can be there, so they can pick up the belongings, the insurance agents can come by and look at the vehicle to make sure, you know, whatever needs to be done with it, and I can surveillance it, you know, so I can, somebody wants to come steal stuff, I can see it, I'm always there, as opposed to a lot in, say, downtown Madison or Stokesville that is already zoned for such stuff, I can't always be there, and like I, like I mentioned, of course, I'd have to pay for that as well, and I can't afford that. I don't really plan on having any obnoxious noises. The bobcat, I move around with it, the rollbacks, any other vehicles, I drive them around just like anybody else would do on the property. There's farmers that drive their tractors around, there's people that ride the four-wheelers, they shoot guns. I'm not making any more noise than they are. And I also have a very large buffer somewhere between me and the main road. And like I said, the only neighbor near me is the one next to me, and I believe we're all in agreeance that they're okay with what I'm doing. I went to every neighbor adjacent to my property, I'm friends with a lot of people around me that I went to them personally, I've met people over this, I went to their house, knocked on their door, made sure that they knew what I planned on doing and to see if they had any opposition to it, and to make sure that I wasn't going to be in here today trying to plead my case against somebody that had never known what was going on. If there's any opposition to it, it's a personal vendetta against me and not what I'm going to be doing on my property.
I'm concerned about the cemetery in the mid, it looks like it's located in the Middle East.
There's no cemetery there, I'm not sure why that got there.
I think it's outdoor storage. I think what looks like a cemetery may just be more outdoor.
That's my backyard. I'm not sure... There's a dog lot right there.
You don't have any bodies in there?
No, there should be. There's a couple of dogs buried on the property, but there's no people that I know of.
Just checking.
I have a more detailed site plan. I think I've tried to email it to Carrie, but I don't know if she got it or it was a...
Not... It's not in time to send to the board for a read ahead.
I've got it drew up right here. Pretty much, as you can see, the property, the bottom-left corner, where I guess you can see the shadows of the trees, that's where the vehicles will be stored. The only way that it can be seen is if you come to my house and go around my backyard and see the vehicles. Other than that, any vehicles you see will be in the front yard and they'll be used daily or there for a short period of time as far as, you know, if I tow one in and it's too wet to get down the hill because of the slope, I have to sit it there until I can get it down the hill without damaging it. Scrap cars, I'll get it down the hill if I have to, but as far as towing for somebody, it stays up top until I can get it down when it dries up or until I can get a gravel road built. As I said, I started doing this, kind of took a while here and decided to try working for myself as a one or two my whole life and I'm getting what I can as I can as far as fencing and gravel and stuff like that.
Thank you. Oh, before you go, any questions for Mr. Faircloth?
Not for him, but I have a couple of questions.
Okay. You can go back and sit down. You had questions?
If we were to approve this, Carrie, can we condition a visual buffer for the neighbors? And can we limit the number of salvage vehicles allowed on the property?
Well, it's a square footage dedication.
I was just going to say, to make a... To give a nexus to the ordinance and the way the use is described, I think the best way to do it would be to limit it to an area rather than a number.
Right. That's... Okay. That's fine.
600 feet isn't a lot. It's only like 20 by 30. Yep.
So, as I said, can you see the map where you're at?
Yes.
Bottom-left corner, you can see a bundle of trees where the line on the left side of the property, it kind of turns. Those trees are rather large buffer zone now, you know, and they're grevy green. They stay green all year round, so I wouldn't say it's a fence, but you can't see through. The only visual you'll have besides coming on my property to see them is the little space you can see behind, at the corner to the trees. And I have a... I can install any kind of fence y'all recommend to put up to make this right. But I've acquired a sound barrier. I'm not sure if y'all know in Summerfield where the sound barrier is replaced on the side of 220 coming into Battleground? I work reaction structure and they gave me probably 12, 13 sheets of that. It's four-foot by 20-foot. And it can be stood up, it can be painted, it can be dressed up. And that's, not only would it be a sound barrier, it would also be something you can put up as a fence.
Yeah, something for any interstate highways.
I was just thinking of any kind of visual.
Yes, sir.
From the 2018 aerial shot of your property, there's like 12 vehicles right on the driveway at the road.
Yes.
At that time. Do you understand why that could cause you to be here tonight?
I understand. I do.
If you do what you say you're going to do...
If you could get an aerial photo now, it's completely different. There are vehicles up front, but like I said, those are vehicles that are planned on being driven every day. If I go outside and it's raining, I can't get up the hill. And not to mention, I've done a lot of grading in the back and it's dirt. I get back there, I'm going to tear stuff up. As I understand, anything that's registered vehicle doesn't really count as outdoor storage anyway, so I try not to concern myself too much about those. I'm going to be eventually putting gravel down in the back. I just have to get it when I can because it's rather expensive. But I think I'm right at about 2,500 square feet of storage area. It may be more, maybe less. I just took a rough estimate because it's just an area I started grading on and trying to get level ground. But as far as that's concerned, I think the sound barrier...
I think what's got everybody concerned is that 2,500 square feet is four times what the county allows for storing vehicles.
I understand.
And I think the fear is that you're going to turn the property into some kind of junkyard.
No, sir.
I think that's what the implication is of...
I do understand the concern. And the only reason I say 2,500 square feet is that also allows me to have room to move, room for the vehicles to be spaced apart. And, you know, I look at my house as 1,700 square feet and I look at it like this, I can't put too many cars or square footage of my house. That's where I kind of referenced 2,500. I added about 1,000 feet to it to understand that, you know, if I had a lot the size of my house, I could probably put three or four cars in there before I start running into them trying to move it around. The lot in question probably wouldn't ever get filled up with cars because that's my area I plan on moving around, putting trailers and trucks that might have to move at times and sit for a while. I've got to live here. I don't want to live in a junkyard. I like to come home, have a nice, clean-cut yard. I like to plant trees, make them look nice. I've done tree work for several years and I took pride in maintaining stuff as far as maintenance on that. Another thing is I maintain the driveway. We have about a half mile from Eden Church Road to get to my house. Me and neighbors, we get together, we fix the driveway. I use my equipment, my tractor, my bobcat, fix the driveway when I can, I put some gravel on it. And we, like I said, as far as aesthetics go, nothing will be changed from the way it is now.
Is Ellisboro Garden Road gravel road?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. I'm probably going to mispronounce this name. Mr. Corum, Corbin? What is your name, sir? Are you Mr. Corum?
Yeah.
Okay. Please come up. Please tell us your name and address.
My name is Curtis Corum. I live at 670 Perry Hill Bridge Road, Repin, NC.
Okay. And if you would now, place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And what would you like the planning board to know?
I would want to know. I've lived in the same place in this area since 1948 on the same property. And my property is the White Oak Creek that joins, and the land that's on the Parkinson Road joins the creek. And I don't know... I got this card and I don't understand what they're asking for.
He's for the next case. He intended to sign up for the case on Parkinson Road, sir?
Okay.
Did you intend to speak about the case on Parkinson Road?
Yes.
So this case will be heard next. Our apologies. I think your name just got onto the wrong sheet. If you don't mind having a seat, we'll have you come up as to the next case. We're talking about a different one right now.
Okay.
Well, that being the case, there are no other speakers, or there are no other speakers for this case. So...
Just a couple of notes to add. We were talking about area versus cars. As reminded, 600 square feet will fit about four cars. So it's not a... You know, it's very... It's a... I think you're talking about something that's in between 600 square feet and a junkyard, if there's such a thing and can be described well enough.
And do you have a number for that?
No, it doesn't... It just doesn't fit neatly into another use, therefore, that's why this was the most appropriate thing used for him to ask for.
Comments or discussion amongst members?
I'm a little flummoxed on this one. And I understand that, like Carrie presented it the way she did, I have no problem with this man doing his business. I really don't. But it seems not to fit neatly into anything that would work. And I'm a little concerned that staff recommended denial of the case, but I'm trying to weigh... I don't know what the best solution is.
What is the basis of the staff recommendation?
Yeah, the basis is that it is very difficult to describe the use in a way that would be something that could be controlled or regulated. And of course, I haven't seen the more detailed site plan. I ought to look at that. You can bring it to me now, yeah, if you want to. And the... Thank you. The applicant had listed for us the uses that he intended to perform on the property, but it's never been really clear. So let me see what we have here. So there's a shop and the 200, 2,500 square feet of outdoor vehicle storage. That part I'm just, is unclear about exactly what that use is.
Well, I think he actually... I noted that, but I think that he actually explained that he's kind of a construction, I don't like this term, but jack-of-all-trades.
Yeah, but we've got to have some kind of definition to be able to regulate it. I mean, he's got three or four different types of businesses going.
Yeah, he's definitely...
Parts salvage, towing, landscaping.
This one does not fit neatly into any kind of...
But is that reason enough to deny a person a way to make a living?
And that's what I'm struggling with because I think that if we... While it doesn't fit necessarily neatly, it doesn't... He sort of seems to have about the same mission. He's not... He's really not all over the place. It's just he's varied in his skill sets or has equipment and ability to provide services. I am concerned about the number of cars that would be housed there for any given time. I mean, I understand if he's going to bring a car in, turn it and go. I wouldn't have a problem with limiting it. And I think 600 feet, that... I don't... I'm not sure that would be what he needs, but I'm okay limiting it to that. And I'm also okay making sure that there's some kind of buffer. And it doesn't have to be concrete or whatever. It can be Leyland cypress, for example. Those are my two thoughts.
Mr. Chair, I have one other question that might help out with that as well.
Yes.
From a topography standpoint, it looks like from his house to his neighbor's house to the west that there is an incline of substantial amount. Am I reading that right on the map? So how big of a drop would that be from your neighbor's down to your house? It looks like there's some erosion there, which indicates a nice-sized hill.
Yes, it is. We've actually fixed that and it's grass now.
Well, I'm just... One of my interests is how much of an elevation change from your neighbor's house to your house?
If you're standing in their yard above where it plains back out, you're at my gutter line.
Okay. Is that consistent all the way down your property line?
No, sir. About where the... You see where the property line kind of breaks back towards theirs? Right there, everything's about the same grade. There's no slope past that. I've actually graded down past the trees I mentioned as a sort of buffer zone to... It is about three to four foot lower in some spots where I had cut the hill down because it was high. I just brought it down so I could have level ground.
So in that back corner where those cars are located on the picture now, that's downhill from where your house and your neighbor's house is?
Everything from behind the building there is downhill. It's a pretty nice slope. So that's a buffer zone, I guess you could say, in itself.
Well, that's kind of where I was going at with that because that kind of... Yeah, from Ellisboro Garden Lane and the house, if it's downhill, you're not going to have a lot of sight sore.
Miles driveway, if you can see where it widens out about where it's widest, that's actually a no. From the gate where the property starts to the top, if you're standing in the road, you can see about half of my house and up. If you're standing at the building, you can't see the road.
That's what it looks like. Carrie, has there been any calls, I mean, besides the complaint, obviously? Has there been any calls either way?
On the erosion or the...
No, on this case.
The complaint, and I do have some pictures of the property and what it looks like, but the calls are just the complaint and the calls that came in. I think there's a couple of comments that came through.
I saw that. Well, I would suggest to the board with the buffer aspect of it, that downhill slope kind of negates that. I mean, to me, it looks like, because it's... I mean, that looks on this picture, if it's gutter line for me, that's 15 to 20 feet, in my opinion.
If I may add, I'm apologize. If I may add, the fence, well, the straight line right there where you were talking about where it's washed out, there's actually a five-foot, I guess you'd say cattle fence there that the neighbors put up. And from the back of my building down to where it ends, it ends at the group of trees right there. It's encased itself in kudzu. You can't even tell there's a fence there. It's so thick. And that also adds five feet of height to whatever you would be able to see anyway. The only place that's not fenced is the section I mentioned where I could put something. And I just want... I want to clarify, the sound barrier is made of styrofoam. It's really light. It's really easily moved, manipulated, and it lasts forever. It's not going to have any kind of contaminants or anything.
The site plan that Mr. Faircloth gave us tonight has a proposed fence by the outdoor storage area. This he just presented to me tonight, just a minute ago.
Is that the outdoor that's on the left side of that property line?
Yes. But he's got more details here. He has a proposed fence.
This is the same site plan. I just had my girlfriend help me write it because y'all wouldn't have understood it.
Carrie, confirm for me. You said that 600 feet is roughly, your estimate is how many cars?
Four.
Four cars.
That's my understanding as well.
And he's got... What'd you say? You had a dozen different vehicles?
Not, you know, not personal. If the max that would ever be there, and I say the max is 20.
Looking at your new site plan, is your intention to put all of these vehicles, including the ones that are now out front, back here in this storage area? Or are you going to have a storage area plus the vehicles in the front?
I'm not sure. If you look at the site or the GPS image, it's... It looks clustered, but any unregistered vehicles, anything that not be driven on the road or moved within the next day or so, will be in the storage area. The only time I would ever consider having one up front, which is my front yard where my kids play, I don't want to have junk vehicles there, is if I can't get it to the backyard at the moment, if there's some kind of, you know, weather issue where I can't get down the hill.
I'd see.
And I also take into consideration that if I do need to put it up there, I can also on the... If you're coming in on the left side of the gate, which would be the right side from the image, I can put... I've considered putting a privacy fence up if I do need to have one up front for a day or so. I can put it up there so it's not an eyesore to anybody passing through.
Julie, he is planning on putting a privacy fence here and there's a gate to the front. This is way out there.
Four or five.
Okay. So I did a little math, which is scary.
Yes.
So if he has, did you say roughly 25 vehicles?
Twenty, 25 at the max.
Okay.
And that's where I sort of got my... And that's where I sort of got my number from as well, as far as...
Yeah, so if you take 600 divided before, you need 150 feet, times 20 is 3,750 feet, so you would need more than you're proposing. But if there's a privacy fence, I'll bend on that.
Another question, clarification, I'm sorry. So are we just talking about junk cars or licensed vehicles? Isn't there a distinction as far as the only go?
There is, and, and there's always, there's always been some unclarity in my mind as to what numbers of personal vehicles, are those junked, are they not junked, and are the, there is definitely a distinction.
Because if they're licensed and available for use, then that's not what we're considering, we're just considering the junk vehicles.
No, that's, that's correct.
And that's, that's what I'm concerned about. Yeah, okay, so, and we have the, we have the option of limiting the number of unlicensed junk vehicles as a condition?
Yes, you do.
I don't think we need to, though, because anything under 600, over 600, he'd be violation. You understand that, right?
As equals.
Okay, so you can have four junk vehicles and stay within the, within the statute, or within the UDO.
As far as my understanding, as far as, unfortunately, I've learned quite a bit with code enforcement the past few years, the 600 square feet, square feet of outdoor storage accounts for anything that's outside, that cannot be stored inside as far as outdoor storage.
Yeah.
You know, anything, ATVs, so I try to consider that as well as the 600 square feet outside of the 2,500 square feet I've designated. So I try to, you know, keep that to a minimum anywhere. I try to not consider just four cars, I consider the other stuff outside as well, try to make sure I stay within, well within my guidelines.
So Carrie, as I understand that we're, we want to issue a special use permit, but we don't know what we're issuing it for. That can be regulated, is that correct?
The personal, the personal vehicles that are operable, are those used as part of a business?
For the most part, we have a couple that we drive for personal, we drive our personal vehicles here, as far as, I don't want to drive a rollback or a large truck here, just, you know, if I can get in a smaller car, better fuel and stuff, but...
So the cars that are operable, what do you, what kind of business do you do with those?
I've got, as of right now, I've got two rollbacks. One is unconditioned right now, it's failed me, and I got to get some parts for it, so I don't have it registered. But it will be as soon as I get it fixed, because it's sort of money consuming if I don't drive it.
All right, so that's used for a towing business?
Yes, I have, so far I've got two, I've got a couple trailers I use as well, and I can't use one of the rollbacks. And I've got a dump truck, I'm not sure if they're in that image or not, but this, the rollback is a 20-foot rollback, it's a two, it's a two-ton truck, it's rather large, and the smaller one is a one-ton. You know, the, the big rollback take is over 600 square feet in itself, but, once again, it's registered, so I kind of think it, from my understanding, it's exempt from the outdoor storage. And if you can see the, on the site plan, there was a barn that says unused, the top right, next to the driveway. Besides that's where I usually park them. It's out of the way, you can't, you know, it's convenient to park there, and it's not going to get muddy and in the grass.
All right, let me, let me just interrupt you and see if you can understand what our dilemma is here. You're using some of the vehicles for a towing business, you're using some of the vehicles for a construction business.
Yes, sir.
You're using some of the vehicles for a landscaping business.
The dump truck, I guess you could say.
And you're using some of the vehicles for auto salvage business, so in trying to regulate what your permit's going to be, I mean, what do you, what do you call yourself?
If, I, I do have a question if, if...
If you're going to have a business, it's, it's going to be regulated.
I understand.
But what are we, what are we going to regulate?
I understand. The main concern I have, I think, as well as y'all, is this vehicle storage, as far as towing. The bobcat work that I do, I guess, following or landscaping and stuff, those vehicles are solely used for that, and they'll be parked there with, you know, registered and have their own designated parking spot, there won't be any changes to that. And I'm understanding right, you don't really have to have a permit to have a registered vehicle parked at your house. The main, like I said, the main concern is the outdoor storage. So I guess the, the main focus would be having a special use permit to be able to store Everything kind of coincides together on the same property, but I don't think it's too relevant that, about the vehicles I use for work off the property.
Did, Carrie, does he meet the requirements for towing and salvage business?
I would, I would call it a, a vehicle, con, vehicle yard for a con, to support a contracting business. So just parked active vehicles that support a contracting business, and that's, that's not, you know, that's not an illegal use of the property, but it would be...
Is it subject to county regulation?
In this, in that it's not a residential use, yes. So it would be subject to this rural family occupation, you would limit it to where it is on the property, how often he's coming in and out of there. But this is, it's like if you think about somebody who runs a landscaping business and parks their tractors and trailers on their property, and the property is just used for storage for off-site work.
Yeah.
That's, that's a separate, that's a separate use. And then the outdoor vehicle storage for the, for scrap use, that, where the vehicles are staying there and their purpose is to be stored on the property, would be a second use.
Would it be appropriate to put this off and have him work with staff? And they could both come back with the answer, that we can rule on?
I don't see why we can't do that.
It should have been done before we got it denied, I think.
Well, we've been, we have been back and forth a few times to say, to try to clarify better exactly what the use is, I'm not sure that it would help.
I would think that it would, if there's a substantial change in the application or any, anything that would, there's nothing.
No.
Yeah, I think in order, if it is, if it's for more detailed review of the board, what the information is, I mean, a motion to table, that, that'd be a motion that had been made, voted.
I, I think we need, we need some better language to, to fit the use. And I'm not really sure how to do that, because he fits some things, he fits other things, it's...
We shouldn't have to do that. We'll just rule on what's presented.
I move that we table this application until we get some better information on which we can make an informed decision.
So we need a written description of everything...
I second that, Ms. Chair.
In your writing, not in, not dictating to someone else writing it down, but in your writing, a submittal of, of the activities that you want to do on the property.
I understand, and would it be more effective to focus more on something, like I said, the outdoor storage vehicles, as opposed to just me parking a vehicle that I'm going to use off-site?
No, both of them need to be, both of them are non, not, yeah, would need to be regulated.
Okay.
And need to be on the, on your site plan and described as part of a business.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, because it can really kind of vary it down to two things, but I didn't want to, you know, focus on one more than the other, or if I even had to focus on one at all. That's why I've talked to people that have done sort of stuff like this, kind of, you know, not heard of much. I've heard that you can, you know, park a vehicle at your house and use it for work, but now that I'm here talking to y'all now, I want to clarify what I need to do as far as explaining what these vehicles are for, or what I store there for the work off-site. I'm not sure exactly what we're looking there, I know I can speak with Carrie.
There, I think that, and if you can, if you can describe it differently, but because there's a variety, you have a small fleet of vehicles that are contributing to your off-site work, you can store a vehicle at your property that you work with, but this is, this is different, I'm considering it different than that, because there are several buildings that come and go.
What I can do, is an idea came to me right now, I can just write down a list of the vehicles I use for work.
Well, that, that you should undertake, in the meantime, we've got to move along here.
Yes.
We have a motion in front of the members, and seconded, to table this case until we get some better information. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There being no opposition, case number 2020-20 is tabled for future assignment by staff, pending the submission of some improved information from the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you. Staff will now introduce us to our third and final case on the agenda, case number 2020-22.
So case 2020-22 is another special use permit for a rural guest establishment. The purpose of this rural guest establishment is for equestrian, an equest, an accompanying equestrian facility. It's a chicken and egg sort of thing. Our ordinance doesn't have an equestrian facility use per se, but the rural guest establishment use very clearly talks about using properties like that for equestrian facilities. And I'm talking about in the rural guest standards, I don't know, this isn't going to be super handy, the uses that are listed include equestrian facilities, the sort of thing that a rural, would be accomplished on a rural property. So this property is located in the northeastern part of the county, on Perkinson Road. It's in the rural land class, whose purpose is to provide for farm and forest management and various low-intensity uses, including residences where urban services are not required and natural resources will not be impaired. Characteristics are lands with high potential for agriculture and forestry uses with, and commercial uses associated with agricultural resources, agribusiness and agritourism, which actually, the, the word equestrian facility is one of the very first things that the term agritourism was created for. This is showing you where the property is located. And an aerial view of the property, this is another case where the special use permit is for a specific area of the property, this pasture area here close to the southern border of the property. And this site plan shows you in more detail what the, what and where, how the property will be used. The rural guest establishment piece of this, the dwelling piece of this, is for RV parking when a, when a customer is coming to use the facility for horse training or riding, and I'll let the applicant describe what other kind of equestrian activities are going to be going on there. Trailer, they trailer the, their horse in, pulling the trailer behind an RV is a very common, common way to, to travel with your horse and to spend time visiting a facility. And then the idea would be for the applicant to create a RV hookup area. These, it's not an RV park, because the RVs are not coming there to spend long periods of time, they're coming there specifically for the equestrian facility. Therefore, my interpretation was that it was, they would satisfy the intent of a rural guest facility.
I'd like to point out that the last slide you had also shows a cemetery in the middle of the picture. Why are we fixated on cemeteries tonight?
I think we're going to talk about that. Maybe the applicant hasn't...
Next you're going to tell me they're just dying to get in there.
Oh, my God. Somebody had to do it.
How do you know what happened even if they're buried?
Well, let, we'll wait and tell them.
Any questions for staff? Okay, may we please speak with Frank Verdi, please?
I think this is an appropriate side to leave up.
Mr. Verdi, if you would first, please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Frank Verdi, my address is 205 LaChey Drive in Reedsville, North Carolina.
Okay, and we're only dealing with one speaker at a time.
Thanks.
Would you...
Can he hand out the materials we have for you guys?
Sure, but if he's going to speak, he has to be sworn. Is he going to speak?
Yes, sir.
All right, you're going to need to give us, you're, you're doing this together?
Yes, sir, if possible.
All right, give us your name and address, please.
My name is James Cooler, 1534 Squire Davis Road in Kernersville.
Okay, and you both need to place your left hand on a Bible, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay. What is it that you would like the planning board to know about your application?
Well, first and foremost, not sure about the cemetery piece of everything, but we definitely want the living to come and would prefer that the others stay away, so we'll get that, get that off the table right away. Again, my name is Frank Verdi, we really appreciate you guys' time, I know it's been a long evening, we'll be very, very brief and very to the point. Really appreciate Ms. Spencer and her guidance so far through this process. As I said, we appreciate your time just to share a little bit more about the tract land that was recently acquired on Perkinson Road, it's by White Oak Creek, it's a group of, of investors. Donna Garvey, unfortunately, she's one of the, the investment partners, was, was not able to be here this evening. We also have James and Kate Cooler, which are here this evening, and myself, Frank. Upon review of our plans with Ms. Spencer, a couple weeks back, she suggested that we do apply for the special use permit, requesting for the rural guest establishment, as she mentioned. Our intention is to invest approximately $2 million into this project with the efforts to improve what's currently there, while providing a platform for James and Kate with Cooler Horsemanship, which he will share more about in, in just a moment, to carry out their activities. And with that said, hopefully everybody received a handout. I'll let James go ahead and speak very briefly on what it is that Cooler Horsemanship does on a daily basis, and what we intend to do with this property after the development stage. I'll stay up for any questions regarding the development piece, and James will be able to speak into the daily activities regarding the horses. Thank you.
Like Frank said, we'll make sure to keep this brief for you, and thank you all for your time and, and everything this evening. My, my primary goal here is just to share with you what Cooler Horsemanship is. Horsemanship is sort of an industry within the horse industry, that's a style of training that primarily focuses on using natural horse psychology as the approach to training horses. We specialize in coaching people who own their own horse, and have an interest in really fostering and developing that relationship with their horse to the full potential. So we're not really looking to board horses, or to have people come in for more traditional riding lessons with our horses. We will have our own private horses stabled there permanently, but those will be the only permanent horses there. All others will be horses that come with their owners, for what our real goal is, is to be a retreat destination for two-to-five-day workshops. One thing I'd like to clarify on the, one of the things I think we'll be discussing is the camping and the campsite issue, won't really be a whole lot of big RVs, it's more people who have horse trailers with built-in living quarters that will be utilizing that.
Pardon me for...
No, that's okay, I'm just making sure, I just, I know sometimes images can get built in our head, and so, and so you're more looking at gooseneck-type horse trailers that are going to have built-in living quarters, and again, those will be short-term duration stays for two-to-five-day workshops. Primarily, our goal will be to have about 30 to 35 of those workshops per year, so trying to just give a little bit of reference on, on how that goes. So trying to just give a little bit of reference on how that goes. And our maximum number of participants in any given workshop will be 10 folks and 10 horses because anything above that, we're just not going to be able to give them the experience that we're looking for. So we, like I said, primarily, we're focused on one-on-one coaching, group lessons. We do some horsemanship demonstrations with our horses to promote this style of training and to share it with folks in the local area. And we do take on some special projects for horses in training that may need some intensive training to sort of maybe get them through a difficult level. That usually can be from two to four months. So that pretty much covers what we specialize in and the core of what we'd be looking to do at White Oak Creek Retreat.
Is the, is the property operating now as an equestrian center?
No, sir, it's rural land right now.
That's the land, okay.
Where's Cooler operating now?
I'm sorry.
Where are you operating now?
In 1534 Squire Davis Road. We lease out there. Yeah, we lease out a part of the property.
Are there any questions for Mr. Verdi or Mr. Donovan?
I've got one. Remind me, and maybe I missed this, how many horses will you have there permanently?
Maximum number would be eight permanently.
And these RVs, you're not just going to stable, they're going to be your personal horses?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. All right, Mr. Coram, do you want to come up?
All I've got to say is that these guys seem like they're nice and young and everything, but I've had people on horseback, back way over on their farm. It's 103 acres of that track of land that I own. And sometimes they'll back up close to the Prairie Hill Bridge Road, coming through the woods and all. But I'm pretty sure they'll have their trails marked on their place because you get back in those woods, you get lost. It's a pretty crooked creek and the horses and all, they can cross the creek and go on up through that. And we've got timber that we want to have cut. And they're going to come in now and start thinning their trees and all. And we don't want to get on their property, but we won't stay on this side of the creek that we are on. Clifford Lewis used to be the timber consultant. Now Mr. Parker is the timber consultant, just looking after thinning the trees on their farm. It's just, sometimes we've been working in the fields and we'd have some people that come up on us, on the horses, and we didn't know who they were. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Hold on, any questions for Mr. Coram?
I have a question. Oh, no, you go ahead.
I know you told us earlier on the last case, what was your address? Where did you live?
That was my question.
I live at 670 Prairie Hill Bridge Road. It's 200 some acres in that farm.
Does your property butt up against his?
The old map that the county had, it showed that the trees went across the creek up on Mr. Powell's man. That was when Clifford Lewis, I told him, no. I said, the creek is the property line on the backside.
We would be in agreement with his last statement based upon the most recent survey two weeks ago that was completed.
Yeah.
That the creek line is clearly the center of the creek. We would certainly be in agreement with that.
Yeah, Clifford Lewis and Mr. Robinson was the one that done the survey and start with, C.E. Robinson. He done the survey on the creek. For longer than, I'm pretty sure they'll make nice trails and all.
Mr. Coram, you're, just to clarify, your property does abut this property at the backside of it, at the creek, correct?
Yeah, it joins, the creek is the line, the property line.
Okay, thank you.
It's shaped like a tomahawk, the whole farm that we own, through the borders.
Thank you, sir. How about James Cooler? Is that him that just spoke? I thought he was. Oh, aren't you Mr. Donovan?
No, sir.
Okay, then can we hear from James Donovan?
Hello, I'm James.
So for the record, would you please state your name and address?
I'm James H. Donovan.
And your address, sir?
121 Meadow Brook Lane, Martinsville, Virginia. I own the property adjoining them.
Okay, before you get to that, please place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. There you go. Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matters at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, sir.
You know, I oppose the rezoning for the simple fact that we're a forming community. It's, I don't really like to want the noise and the stuff and stuff that's going on around it. What am I assured of that by living at where I'm at, what kind of buffer zones I'm going to have that keeps my family safe and out of harm's way? That's basically what I want to know, is what's going to happen? What's, what's going to buffer zones? And I publish it unless they can come up to me with something that will assure me that my area will be protected.
Okay.
Is this James Donovan?
Yes.
I just was looking at your property, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Donovan?
Mr. Donovan, do you currently live on this property?
No, but my son does. I own the property, but he lives there.
How many acres do you own?
It's about three.
Okay, we can get the applicant to address your concerns on his rebuttal.
All right.
As, hold on one second. Has everyone that's, I've got one name here. I, it's really difficult to read. It looks like, is it Cobal? Cooley?
No, it's her, yeah.
That might have been, we just thought we were supposed to sign in.
Oh, okay, I couldn't read your writing.
We didn't know it was up.
Okay, are you intending to speak, ma'am?
No, I'm just hearing some words.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Verdi, could you address the concern of Mr. Donovan about, Mr. Donovan, you can sit down, sir.
Certainly. So with regards to the, to the buffer area currently, and I'm not sure if you see it on your handout, the GIS map or one of the maps that shows the colored version. Currently, I'm not sure if they planted them or someone else, but there's, there's very large Leland cypress all the way behind their property, behind their house, which serves as an excellent buffer zone between their property and ours. So we would certainly intend to leave that as is. As far as the adjacent, if you're looking at the property down his driveway, which would really be the only place that we would adjoint, that there's not a current significant buffer zone. Number one, we've already signed the rights over to Duke Energy for providing them with a 30-foot easement from Perkinson Road all the way down his property line that divides his to ours. So by default, we cannot infringe on that particular area whatsoever. Neither can anybody else in the future. That also will go behind his Leland cypress, giving him that 30-foot buffer, which obviously is beyond the normal setbacks that are created for those purposes. We also would be absolutely in favor of working with Mr. Donovan and/or his, his children that live there to create a pleasing, aesthetically pleasing and/or, you know, any other type of buffer that they would, that they would find, you know, significant and also, you know, pleasing to them. We would have no, no issue with that whatsoever and incur the cost.
Could you include that on your site plan?
Certainly, yes, sir. If, if, if someone just guides us as to what we would like that to be, we're, we're in favor of that for sure.
Can we condition that?
Yes.
I mean, him working with the neighbor. What you would condition to, amended site plan to include a buffer that creates?
No, he said that he would be willing to work with the neighbor. Can we condition that?
I mean, if you're, if you're talking about spending money on your own property and working with the neighbor, I guess that it would be difficult. All you'd have to say is that a buffer that's satisfactory to the neighbor, that would be very difficult to, to, yeah.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt. We, we've spoken to Candace, the, one of the residents there, his, his daughter-in-law, regarding this particular issue. And I guess my point is, we would be more than happy to incur the cost to provide a buffer that's appropriate to this, this panel while working with them, you know, to do so in a manner that would be pleasing to them.
We can describe it as a, as a purely opaque buffer, something that, that allows no visual. That sort of, that sort of thing versus a, versus a light buffer. We're talking about a dense buffer versus a screen. We can describe it that way.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, you may.
Just in response to Mr. Donovan's concern about safety, we'd like to just to show you the folks that, you know, are going to be hauling in and that we tend to work with, anybody that's willing to haul their horse any sort of distance. They're, they're going to have high safety priorities in concern. And we take our safety as one of our top priorities. You know, they say don't talk about a no-hitter, but we've been doing this for a long time and we have a great track record of safety. And we'll make sure that's a priority for not only us, but for them as well.
I have one more question for you. Sorry, I just thought about this. On the site plan, you have the barn and it looks like a pretty significant barn, not too terribly far from Mr. Donovan's property. Or what do you do, what are your measures to make sure that there are no noxious fumes from horse waste and things like that, so just in case the wind starts to drift?
Sure. We, we do daily cleaning and we remove any horse waste to an area that will be far away from them for that purpose. And it will be utilized as a compost pile that will be managed. If need be, we'll have it covered, but that's something we've taken into account. But the, the use of daily cleaning, we have high standards for cleanliness. So not only for their benefit, but for our benefit as well, we'll make sure that's a top priority.
Okay, thank you.
This, just to clarify, the larger barn that you see is approximately 300 feet setback from the property line with the buffers already there. But, but that's an actual indoor arena, so.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
The majority of that is a riding arena.
So it'll be kept, maintained on a, on a daily basis, morning and night.
Just remind us the investment you're making here?
The, the initial projected investment is roughly $2 million.
So this is not going to be a low-budget situation?
Not, not at all, not at all. And we greatly appreciate, you know, you guys' consideration to allow us to invest in this community.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one question. In addition to horsemanship and clinics, demonstrations, will you be housing any horses, temporary or long-term?
The, the permanent horses that will be housed will be our own. That will be up to eight. Outside of that, anything would be temporary. We would take, you know, up to two horses in training at a time. That can be anywhere from two to four months on average. And then a workshop, maximum number of horses for a two-to-five-day workshop would be 10. Ideally, it would be eight or less because we want to have more private intimate settings where people get great one-on-one attention.
Well, anything such as, say someone's going on vacation and can you house my horse for?
No, we do not do that.
They're not talking about a boarding facility?
No.
That's good, that's good, thank you.
And if, yeah, if, just for clarification, if you'll see on the, on the site plan, and it may not have, I apologize for the, the lack of clarity. There are two, other than the, the large barn structure that was mentioned earlier, there's two other smaller open structures, which will actually be the stalls that are the furthest from any residential. And so the one to your left, if you're looking at the, at the overlay, will be for the, the resident horses. And then the one to the right will be for the guests. So they're separate.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Discussion?
Unless we can put the condition for the buffer, that's, that's the only thing that I would recommend.
I think that's a good condition, too, because it solves the objection of the Donovan family. Can we hear a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion. The Planning Board has reviewed the special use permit that adopts the following statements as required by the Rockingham County UDO, NCGS, 153A-341 and 153A-342. After considering Rockingham, after considering Rockingham County adopted comprehensive plan in UDO, the Planning Board approves case number 2020-22. This action is consistent with the adopted Rockingham County Land Use Plan. After review of competent material and substantial evidence in the record, the Board makes the following findings, that the use or development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated as to maintain or promote the public health and safety and general welfare, that the use develop, the use or development complies with our required regulations and, and the standards of this ordinance with all other applicable regulations, that the use or development located, designed, and proposed to be operated as to maintain or enhance the value of the contiguous property, or that the use or development is a public necessity. And then the use or development conforms with the general plans for the land use and development of Rockingham County as embodied in the chapter and in the Rockingham County UDO. We additionally would like to make this approval contingent or conditional on placing a buffer at the property line with Mr. Donovan.
Is there a second to the motion?
A second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the application for case number 2020-22. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There being no opposition to the request, the application is approved and the special use permit is also approved, with the conditions as stated. Okay, that concludes the quasi-judicial hearings. And we have on the agenda that we were going to tackle the parliamentary training, parliamentary procedure training tonight. However, However, I've decided that we first need to look at and approve the bylaws because of there's some dramatic changes to the bylaws which affect parliamentary procedure. So if we don't do the bylaws first, we'd be kind of put in the cart before the horse. If you've had a chance to look over the previous bylaws, you'll notice that they're basically under the powers and duties are granted under North Carolina General Statute 153A. 1583A has its origins all the way back to 1868. And it was, it does, and it was an ordinance designed to establish the rules of government for counties. By 1905, it became clear that other regulations were needed for establishing different branches of government for cities and towns. Over the years since then, the decades, the problems arose in that one statute was always working either in contradiction to or sometimes even in accordance with the other statute. About five years ago, I think it was in 2016, if my memory serves me correctly, the North Carolina Bar Association and the General Assembly and almost all of the community development directors in the state put their heads together in Herculean fashion, came up with a brand-new statute that consolidates everything that we do as a planning board or board of adjustment into one new statute called 160D. The document that Carrie just handed you shows now that the one I first sent out had 153A, 160A, and 160D on it. This one just has 160D because any references to 153A or 160A that are still applicable to what we do are included in 160D by reference. So there's no need to list a whole bunch of statutes to confuse everybody. Now, you have also been given a summary of the revisions between the old bylaws and the new bylaws. And I just want to buzz through these real quick so everybody understands them, how they're going to affect the new parliamentary procedure rules, and we'll get everybody out of here. So we've already said that in Section 1, Powers and Duties, we're now just going to stick with 160D. Under Membership Turns and Vacancies, if you go to paragraph four, and that would be on page two, I think. Right. You'll notice that we're going to be required to take an oath of office. Hopefully, we can get or ask Mark Richardson, who's chairman of the Rockingham County Commissioners, to come and administer the oath to us. But there are other choices, like the county clerk could do it, actually, any notary public could do it. This was a requirement of the Statute 160A, but it was never included in the original bylaws, and so we're actually operating without being in compliance with the law. This changes that. In Section 5.3, if you'll flip to that, a bifurcated or split meeting is when part of the meeting is zoning and under the jurisdiction of the planning board, and the other meeting comes under the jurisdiction of the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment's principal mission is to grant the variance, whereas all other business is conducted in front of the planning board. We had been doing split meetings, but there was never anything specifically in the previous bylaws that detailed a procedure under which that was to take place. And very simply put, what happens is the planning board has to adjourn its business. A motion has to be made to reconvene as the Board of Adjustment, the Board of Adjustment conducts its business, and then we close that meeting and, under motion again, reconvene back as the planning board.
We haven't done that yet. We haven't done that yet?
Yes, we have.
We've done it in practice, but it hasn't been in the bylaws.
Yeah, it hasn't just...
I thought we're still in Board of Adjustments right now, is what I'm saying.
Because we started out as a Board of Adjustment.
No, we're still in planning board. The planning board just conducted some quasi-judicial hearings.
With a motion to go into that, now we need a motion to come out of it.
Not, for this particular meeting tonight, we won't. We already concluded the hearings.
At the conclusion of the Board of Adjustment hearing, upon a motion with a majority in favor of the Board of Adjustment, shall adjourn and convene again as planning board. And we just haven't done that yet, is what I'm saying. There's been no motion to come out of planning...
We won't need to do that tonight because we've been, all our business conducted tonight has been under the jurisdiction of the planning board.
Okay.
We didn't, the only time we go to Board of Adjustment is for variance.
Or enforcement actions.
Or enforcement.
There's a couple of other, yeah.
Okay.
The new thing, another new thing we're going to have to do that we haven't been doing is adopting the agenda. And there's special... Let me see, I'll put it right page here so I can give it a correct... Right, 5.9. You'll notice that there's special voting requirements for changing the agenda. We can revise the agenda on a simple majority before the meeting, but if the agenda gets modified during the meeting, it takes a two-thirds vote. The next thing that changes is our voting procedures. Under the current bylaws, a vote to abstain from voting, an unexcused absence or unexcused abstention, we're just sat in limbo. Neither counted for anything nor was it against anything. But the law is specific on this. If a member wants to be excused from voting without a legitimate reason, then that vote, unexcused abstention counts as a yes vote. So if the majority of the people are, let's say, even in the case of a tie, that vote would count as an affirmative vote and would kill the tie. And lastly, conflict of interest. I thought it necessary to rip the whole section of the existing bylaws that describe conflict of interest and substitute them completely with the language in North Carolina General Statute 160D, which is very, very specific on what constitutes conflict of interest, way more so than our existing bylaws.
And that's a change, so it's good to go ahead and just incorporate that wholesale.
Yeah.
I mean, this is, this will be the new state statutory requirement.
Exactly.
For conflict of, yeah, that's what you're saying.
And lastly, we included the change that while the planning board has the authority to amend these bylaws, they have to be done with the approval of the commissioners. And all of this has been submitted to the commissioners. This is our 16th and final draft, hopefully. So now I would like to move that we adopt these new bylaws and put them in effect immediately since North Carolina General Statute 160D is effective right now.
Summon.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like, sign. Seeing no opposition, the motion's carried, and we now have a new set of bylaws. Carrie, I'll sign these for you. You can have them.
Thank you.
Before I do that, somewhere here I've got an agenda buried. We have no old business. Carrie, do you have any new business?
No, it got sort of late tonight, so we'll continue. Is that the intent, to continue the parliamentary procedure to the next?
Yes.
Meeting? And the September meeting will also be when we have training on procedures, hearing procedures and planning board from the PTRC.
Very good.
Oh, yeah, I have something very important. There's a new guy. There's a new guy, two new guys, let's try it, two new guys. Tim, Timothy Mack, has just joined us as a planner.
Hello, Tim.
Hi.
This is Tim's second week as a planner on staff, and we're really, really excited about being staffed, about being well-staffed, and we're really excited to have Tim here with us. And the other young lady sitting in front of the column is Stacy Julian, who has joined us as an administrative assistant.
Hi, Stacy.
Stacy happens to be a notary. She's really efficient. She's going to be doing a little bit of everything in the department, so I asked her to come, mainly for the training aspect of it, but it's all exposure to the casework is training. So she, too, is going to be a great addition to the staff.
Finally, you get some help.
Everybody's been saying that for so long. Get some help. You need some help.
I know.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn, anyone?
Summon.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed, like, sign. No opposition, meeting's adjourned.